We've got nine o'clock on Monday, June 30th, 2025, in the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors Room. We'll call this meeting to convene, roll call. Sukho, Zalinski, Hatman, Breivik absent, Carter. Along with Sheila Shackleton, board secretary. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda as presented? Motion by Travis, second by Steve to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? If not, roll call Travis, Steve, Scott, Jake, I absent, Isaac. Motion carried four to zero. Approve the minutes from June 23rd. Any changes?
My motion to approve.
Motion by Steve, second by Scott to approve the minutes from our meeting on June 23rd. Any discussion? If not, roll call Steve, Scott, Travis, Jake, I absent, Isaac. Motion is carried four to zero. Discuss letter of support for Northeast Iowa Community Action. I think we all got an email from Trish Wilkins last week. To support a letter of support. I think Steve, maybe you know a little bit about it, but is it about the federal government potentially putting some programming?
Yeah, that's what it is. I was, I attended the meeting last week because of internet problems at home. But that's what we understand it, so.
Yeah, that's pretty much a wrap, so. There's a letter that's in that email that says our county. Just need permission by this board to sign it. If we support that letter of support, I don't know who they're going to send it to. Just wondering if it supports or not. I think what it will be Sheila, like our name.
So we need a full name, a title, an email, and a signing organization, and then the authorized.
So is there a motion? Got a motion by Travis, second by Steve to sign off on the letter of support for Northeast Iowa Community Action. Roll call Travis.
Hi, Steve.
Scott.
No.
Jake, no, motion died. Absent. Isaac. Got nine oh five, is any public comment, Sheila?
There was no written comment. And there wasn't. And there wasn't any, anyone asked to speak.
Two items. One is to follow up from the public comment from last week regarding the issue that Supervisor Carter brought up regarding the volunteer. And the issue out at the county conservation, I did speak with whole Sheila last week, community auditor's office. And private auditor from Garden Year Company, and everyone seems to be in agreement. And it's my recommendation that we issue a 1099 NEC. Because that individual received in-kind compensation in exchange for their duties. And I sent an email last week when I found that out to Sheila, to Isaac, and to Chad about that. And we'll leave it up to them to determine what that amount is, whether it meets the threshold, how to deal with that at the end of the calendar year. But it's my recommendation that we do indeed issue a 1099 to that individual. And to any other individuals similarly situated. And then the second item is on opioids. Donna and I received periodic updates from Kruger Dickinson, which is a law firm out of Wisconsin, a nationwide law firm. I just want to give you an update that we do have another tranche of money coming here since the end of fiscal year is today. And that we do periodic receive updates from them, ask for recommendations to sign on to additional litigation. And remove ourselves as participants from some litigation for legal purposes. And I've just been following their recommendations throughout the last year, so I haven't come to you guys and asked for authorization, so I've done that. If you want me to, I certainly can, but I feel like we get one every couple of months as to sign this or do that. So I'm just continuing to follow their legal advice, since they're the general counsel on the entire project. But if you guys want more periodic updates or want authorization on that, one way or the other, each time one of those comes forward, I certainly can. Otherwise, just continue to follow their recommendation. And then we will be setting the meeting before the committee. Hopefully sometime in July or first part of August, four or five weeks ago, and to figure out the next plan of action.
If you want to speak now or on the agenda next week too, but if you want to answer this, is there a timeline, we have to spend that money?
I think so. And I know the legislature just passed a bill this spring for the state to start spending some of their money and transferring it to a different organization. Start to push out some of their funding as well, so it'll be interesting to see how that plays out over the future.
Can I legally ask a question about the first agenda or the comment? And maybe Chad may have the same question. Does this, you said it has to be given out to other people potentially. Does the campus fall under that?
I think any agreement we have where someone is, is performing a specific set of duties that we expect them to perform. As opposed to a straight volunteer where there is in-kind compensation and doing it out of their time and business, their heart. If we expect someone to perform duties, then they should assume in-kind compensation, too, like I thought about this last week. But I think that's our recommendation, is that's what the line is, is if you have expectations. As opposed to just show up when you want, and we can't, you know, terminate you or renew your agreement. If there's expectations upon you, then to me, that sounds more in-kind than us volunteering.
And Chad, you agree with the legal team about maybe potentially changing legal agreement or?
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I respectfully disagree. I've had numerous conversations with different people and even at the state level. I mean, this camp host volunteers, I mean, you can get on like the in our website, and it spells right out that it's volunteer position. Expected to work 20 to 30 hours a week. And there's, you know, none of that at that level, so. Maybe it's a bigger issue, I don't know. So yeah, I don't know if you want to discuss some more, but it put on the agenda. My other comment would be then is that the board supervisor decisions, Sheila's decision, or the Conservation Board's decision to issue that 1099. Like they set my salaries. And then the board acknowledges it, or I mean. I don't, again, I don't, I don't, this is the only part of what we do, right? I don't want to get into this, but I also feel that I need to make a statement for the volunteer. And I hope he continues, because if he doesn't, the amount of money that that work could be transparent to the taxpayers, that's going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money. Right? Because what, what he's doing out there for eight bucks an hour roughly in compensation. Is going to cost me 25 bucks an hour plus benefits to replace that, right? Eight hours a week basically is what it's going to cost us, so I think this is a prime example of, you know, where common sense should, should have some say in this equation. You can't look at it that way, but it's not very exciting to me, I guess, right?
I would agree with you, and I'm not disagreeing with you one bit. And I'm not passing judgment on whether it's a good deal or not a good deal.
Right, right.
I had that conversation, and I get opposition with Isaac as well, I think it's a great deal for the county, and I think all these things are great deals. But I'm just following up on the question I was asked looking to, and the question I was asked looking to is that. You know, if they're, if they have expectations upon them, they're receiving something, some sort of compensation, some sort of in-kind compensation. In exchange for expectations. We will do X, Y, and Z, and that is more akin to a 1099 than it is to a straight volunteer. And Sheila and I had that conversation, so I mean, we can file up as to who, who determines whether they're issued and how they get, who issues them, whether. I mean, I think ultimately asking the auditor's office, they're charged on the payroll, so I don't know that you, your board has the ability to generate those. Maybe there is a base system out there where an individual can generate 1099. But I think the auditor's office probably should be the one that's, that's in charge of them.
Yeah.
Right, because you're going to pay well, you're there again, so.
Maybe we should just put this up next week, because I'm concerned about the campus, because is that a $6,000 value?
But then you also need to look into the campus too, because. So the one situation was completely different than this situation, the campus, the person has to be there. And how, it's got to be a whole justice, huh?
They're not always there.
No, they're not, they're not, they're not, I'm talking, I mean, they're.
I was thinking there's kind of like an office type situation.
Yeah, not necessarily, they're just, again, there's kind of a gentleman's agreement, there's a rough outline, I mean, which David and I took that contract or that thing that was put together before David and I were sitting in the seats that we sit in now. And modified it to this other volunteer position, figuring why not, so. Yeah, I don't, I don't have an answer for you there. We can go to the agenda and look into it further, but that's, that's the initial finding, and we have time to continue to work on it.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be issued to the county.
Well, I mean, it doesn't, but I also want to have a conversation with my individual in all fairness, because we entered into this and this was not part of the agreement, right? So I mean, in writing, I mean, and David did a really job at sparring it out, but he can get out of this with a simple letter to the Conservation Board, so. I think sooner rather than later, to be fair for that individual, to be like, hey, I'm out of here, good luck, you know?
Well, if we have some campus. Then you know we're fine.
So and what, I mean, I, I, again, we can put it on the agenda, I can discuss what that would cost the county, I mean, if we.
Because yours, it's on your agenda tomorrow night, right?
It is on my, and it is on our agenda, and I was hoping to just kind of update you. But then I got, yeah, the email and that stuff, so I've had some.
The other option is, is we look at what the value is. You know, does the value change because of that site, you know what I'm saying? I mean, is there a way to work it such that the value that's received is not going to meet the threshold or is not going to.
Six hundred.
Meet that, right, because it's up to us to determine what the value is. So I mean, I think that's the angle that we would look at, as to how do we determine what that value is, right? I mean, if, if it's, hey, we expect you to do X number of hours, that to me sounds pretty easy to figure out what the value is. But if it's, hey, we expect you to be there, you know, or to do these jobs randomly, round from time to time, that to me means we can kind of determine what the value of that work is. Yeah, that, that's, that's the angle that I, that I would suggest we do.
Why don't you just discuss it tomorrow night, and then give us an update on Monday?
See what that, alright, sounds good, thank you.
You're right, I, this is part of it.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to the number one, six, one, four. A bunch of things here, review an act on bridge posting, resolution 630-25-27.
So only one major part in that resolution, the others are pretty standard, one would be Bridge 2530 recommended close. It's been posted three tons for a significant amount of time. We've had definite overload to go over it, so myself, I guess I'm going to recommend closure on it per consultant's recommendations as well, so.
The other ones are five other bridges, pretty much lower the posting.
Lower one lane.
You guys all got a copy of this last week, just for the public watching, you're going to put a hard close with some bolted rock or a barricade.
So there'll be tight trees up until we get our locates done, which should be early this week, and yeah, we'll place a couple piles of dirt to keep people from breaking down and going over it. I guess in the future, at some point, we'll probably remove it. I don't know what the board's appetite for replacing it is, it's a fairly big bridge on a low travel road, so we'll see what the public, public says about it, or. New Year's time, there's no real backlash, I would say we keep it closed.
I assume this is happening today, so are you going to put a temporary real close sign on the blacktop on the 50th?
Uh, there'd probably be a dead end.
So people watching, this is the, on Highway 15th, sorry, Street, 150th Street, west of V18, just north of North Washington. We've talked about this bridge for many years, but I agree with your recommendation to close this. We can have liability for people crossing this bridge.
Three ton, already covers the backup.
You guys saw my presentation on our 25-year needs compared to the funding that we'll have, so. Some of these got to be closed for good, I think, but hopefully that's up to you guys.
Is there a motion to approve, resolution 630-25-27? The proposed posting on six of our bridges. Motion by Scott, second by Travis, to approve resolution 630-25-27, bridge postings. Any discussion? Roll call Scott.
Hi Travis.
Steve.
Hi.
Jake, I, Isaac is absent, motion is carried four to zero. Anyway, we have three copies here.
And I have some copies, fine.
Review draft requests for proposals for architectural consult. For Chippewa County Engineer's Office Building Project, this is the project that we've been talking about for a couple of months. Roman did a nice job of preparing, I think, a very detailed proposal, which is great. You guys have any questions, or Roman, have any questions?
Yeah, I guess I sent it to David as well, he had no, no changes requested. I guess looking for your guys' input, otherwise, as you see. In the 15-page RFP, the, the schedule kind of goes as I would send them out tomorrow, July 1st, if we're moving forward. We'd have a facility tour if requested by appointment the week of July 7th. And proposals would be due August 1st at 10:00 a.m. in the engineer's office. We would open them up in here. If you guys want, or I could open them and tabulate them just the same, it's just an RFP, which maybe that'd be easier, just to save the time. But I would bring them into you guys, but we can review them, I'd have a recommendation, and we would sign the contract with the select consultant. Normal board meeting on August 11th. And I kind of put, you know, approximate slash desired letting date for the construction of the project, which would mean the RFP work is completed by the consultant by December, January. December 25th, January 26th. Which, in that last format, shows what their proposed date of completion would be, so we can base, who we select, if we select, based off the cost as well as timeframe.
Did you have a recommendation of who you're going to send them out to, or?
I have a list of about, I don't know, 12 to 15 consultant firms. For, I guess, talking with other counties that have gone through projects like this. A lot of them had recommendations or the opposite of that, so I guess I have about seven or eight highlighted to send to. If other firms hear about it, I guess if they request it, I'll send it to them as well. Taller base in Iowa, at least an office in Iowa, so.
Yeah, I think that's all good, anybody else have any concern with doing that process? At some point, I think we just need to keep everything separate, so at the end of the day, the mom can pay for these costs. So I don't know if that's the auditors adding up an account to make sure that we keep them separate from the secondary road fund.
Which, did you talk to Howard County's auditor on that?
Yeah, I've been in contact with them, just going to help me do that, okay?
Yes, perfect.
I guess if everybody's good with that, I'll send them out tomorrow.
I'm just asking for a consensus, Travis, Scott, Jake, good to go. Thanks, Roman, department update.
Uh, last week, we had a lot of guys off, you can kind of time out with fiscal year coming to an end. Today, basically, but we did have moors out, we're side roads, we do have part surface roads, we found one completed that you guys know, side roads. Both viewing after the maintainer routes are completed, we have the moors in the Lawler and Alvisa routes, those are nearly completed. So hopefully by early this week, we'll have half the county down on the side roads and continue with the remaining half. Bridge 365-335 replacement project on B22 west of 63, that is, road was closed, bridge demolition is underway. We did meet with Minwa to discuss crane pad needs. Looking like probably a box set next week or early week after. We did get some complaints on Friday in regards to with the rain, regravel road detoured that, since no one's going to go up Palma. But we did get people calling in saying the road isn't that great. Which we're looking at that right now, but we're also going to put more advanced warnings in Alvisa, to just give people a heads up, like. You don't have any more pavements when you had these, so. I think for the most part, people just, they'll figure it out on their own, and I think the majority will still go on to gravel.
A lot of people are going south of that detour, which is the same amount of miles of gravel back to 63. But Kenwood's in pretty rough shape, right? Especially right south of the B22, I don't think it's been maintained enough this year, so I didn't want to touch that up.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it. We were hauling some of the rock that we designated as contract, but hauling with our own guys in the Saudi maintainer route, the blades were out, unable, of course, like I said, we had a lot of guys off. So we're focused on that pulling as well. Sign shop, pretty normal week for them guys, general maintenance equipment prepared. Bridge 2400, Cobble Blacktop, we poured the west pier cap, we drove east pier piling for the east pier footing and the pier stem. So they got one more pour remaining to get kind of out of the water with that east pier cap, which should be early this week, and then we'll start coming pile on the abutments, pouring those footings. And then we'll be looking towards beams in the next several weeks. Bridge 0270 on 300th Street, 356, all work by K construction is completed. Just waiting on rezacitating to move in, of course, last week wasn't a good week for dirtwork anyways, but it was also where they're, they're scheduled with other stuff too, so. Expecting them this week, should see that project, there's 25 days left on contract, but they should be done with plenty of time left. The TR 797 gradation optimization project on Pembroke, I submitted a request for reimbursement to the Iowa Highway Research Board. In the amount of $21,268.82, so we'll be seeing that in the coming week or two. The federal fiscal year FY '25, CHBP, which is County Highway Block Bridge Program. We did not receive, or we did not get selected for that. We met all the criteria that the committee used, except the last one, which they could have mentioned right away, which was if you're included in the previous grant application, you can't be in this one. It's like, I think they thought of that after the fact, I would have liked to not waste four hours of my time figuring that out, but. Either way, we're still on the first one and hoping that we get that, that'll be about $2 million, so. And then, yeah, I spent a lot, large portion of the week doing the RFP for the architectural consultants, we had the six county meeting last week. Thank you all who attended, I guess everyone in here, actually, so. Um, that's pretty much it for department update.
Can we go over the one right below the six county, coordination with city of New Hampshire?
Oh, yeah.
So that, that tree was on the corner of Industrial Parkway.
Yeah, so west of Industrial Boulevard or whatever, it's Industrial Avenue, there's that triangle between 210th, Industrial Avenue, and Kentwood or the overpass. So there's dead ash trees or dead whatever trees in there. I'd say half of them are in the railroad right away. The other half are not right away, the city is doing a, I think all landowners need to have their dead trees down by July 1st or something. Casey and me talked about it, and he talks, you know, maybe we could team up with the city and the county, if we contribute guys, and then we, us with the excavator. I told him we would, but if we're going to do it, I'd prefer to do it in fall or winter, because that's a very wet area. If we're walking equipment down there, we're going to make a mess, safety wise too, so in the meantime, though, we talked, he's going to approach the railroad, because some of it's in there right away. And we'll see what they do, maybe they'll get that whole area probably. And I don't know if they'll do any of it, to be honest with you, so then, are we getting permits toward the right away if we want it down? So.
Yeah, it's a nice story, I can tell you that myself personally. Yeah.
I would say either way, it'll be down in fall or winter this coming year. Unless the railroad takes it down, but you've seen the states that they took up that are still there a year to.
There was a big tree in the ditch right now that fell a couple of months ago, that's still there, but.
Yep.
Those are all road hazards.
Yep. Yeah, will we get them out of there one way or another?
Thank you. Alright, we got four resolutions, or sorry, they're just, they're not resolutions, but. Review an act on renewal of adopted highway permit for the, any questions for Roman, sorry? Okay. Review an act on the renewal of the adopted highway permit for the Alvisa Hasis 4H Club to renew their adopted highway permit for litter patrol along B22 from Alvisa east one and a half miles. So we have four of these today, it's pretty much an annual, two, this one is a two-year renewal. We've been doing this road for many years, so.
Which, yeah, I got to say, I appreciate all these organizations doing what they do, so.
Absolutely. If you haven't seen one before, it's just a continuous agreement with these volunteers slash clubs, nonprofits, so the first one is for Alvisa Hasis 4H Club. Just needs board's signature.
Oh, move, Travis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Steve to approve the two-year renewal extension for Alvisa Hasis 4H Club on B22. Any discussion? If not, roll call Scott. Steve. Travis. Jake, I, motion carried four to zero with the absence of Isaac. The next one is a renewal act on renewal of adopted highway permit for North Washington Volunteer Fire Department to remove litter along V18 from 155th Street south to 180th Street. This one is also a two-year renewal slash extension. North Washington Volunteer Fire Department.
Motion to approve.
That's a two-year also, is there a second?
Right.
Motion by Steve, second by Travis, to approve the two-year renewal extension for North Washington Volunteer Fire Department adopted highway. Any discussion? If not, Steve.
Hi.
Travis. Scott. Jake, I, motion is carried four to zero with the absence of Isaac. Third one, renew an act on renewal of adopted highway permit for 4H Ionia rustlers to remove litter along B57 from Durham Avenue east to Fayette Avenue. Again, two-year renewal slash extension, so. Right. Motion by Scott, second by Travis, to approve the renewal for adopted highway for 4H Ionia rustlers to remove litter from B57 for a two-year renewal. Any discussion? If not, roll call Scott.
Hi.
Travis. Steve.
Hi.
Jake, I, motion carried four to zero with the absence of Isaac. The last one is, review an act on the renewal of adopted highway permit for the Ionia Volunteer Fire Department to remove litter along V14 from Highway 18 south to 30th Street. Again. Perfect. Is there a second? Motion by Steve, second by Scott, to renew the two-year Ionia Volunteer Fire Department adopted highway. Any discussion? If not, roll call Steve. Scott. Travis. Jake, I, motion is carried four to zero with the absence of Isaac.
There are four certificates to be sent.
Yep, I will get those to you, we adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Moving down, renew and approve the Heartland Insurance Risk Pool invoice for the amount of $529,450.37. To be paid in fiscal year 25-26 for the county insurance. Guys, I've got a copy of this, this has came down since we saw it last, due to. Due to staff working on workers' comp issues that we had and liability. So if you do all that. Any discussion? We do this every June, I would not pay this claim until next, you know, better issue the check next. Scott, anything with Heartland on this?
No, we, we got lucky, everything came down. Some of us started doing, some of us aren't doing. Securant insurance we had, thinking we were gonna have a twenty percent increase, we had a zero percent increase, so.
So just remind you all, this is billed by the county general service fund, general supplemental fund, sorry. Under fifty-one department. And then the other departments will reimburse us throughout the year. So this is a lot of money, this is what we talk about all the time, that we need in the July, but this is due July thirty-first. So here goes a little bit more than a half million dollars out. Is there a motion to approve this claim for next fiscal year?
So.
Sorry. Motion by Steve, second by Scott to approve the Heartland Insurance Risk Pool invoice for the amount of five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-seven cents to be paid for next fiscal year. Any discussion on that? If not, roll call Steve.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Travis. J I, motion carried four zero with the absence of Isaac. Review and acknowledge increase in pay for Sheila Farrell Sheriff's Office from twenty-five thirty-nine current to twenty-six eighty-nine per unit contract for the length of service effective June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
I think I sent everybody one of these sheets so they could see it for Sheila Farrell.
Did she get it? Yeah, we did.
Okay, so it just says a rate increase from twenty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents to twenty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. And it's for the length of service increase. And this is effective today's date, actually, June thirtieth.
Is there a motion of knowledge for the Sheriff's Department for paper reasons?
So.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Travis. Motion by Scott, second by Travis to acknowledge the increase in pay for Sheila, right?
Sheila.
Sheriff's Office Union Contract from twenty-five thirty-nine to twenty-six eighty-nine per hour effective today. Any discussion? If not, we'll call Scott. Alright, Travis. Steve.
Hi.
J I, motion carried four zero with the absence of Isaac. Review and approve, sell your lease agreement assignment, this came in to the auditor's office. Dave, you wanna explain a little bit or just?
Yeah, so it looks like just corporate America, companies, subsidiaries buying out other companies, subsidiaries or changing names of LLCs or corporations, whatever it might be, so. Nothing, I don't think is changing the building or the agreement itself. It's just changing who the owner of the, the corporate holder of the lease agreement is.
This is the heritage tire, this is the stuff that we, not, not we, that we allowed to install into our building for better coverage, so. Is there a, I think it's not decided by me?
Yep.
Yep, so is there a motion to approve? Sell the lease agreement assignment and authorize Sheriff's.
So.
Sorry. Motion by Steve, second by Scott to approve the seller's lease agreement assignment, authorize Sheriff's signature. Any discussion? If not, roll call Steve.
Hi.
Scott.
Alright.
Travis.
Hi.
J I, motion carried four zero, absence of Isaac. Award the contractor human resource consultant, two weeks ago, we opened up some RFPs. You guys had a couple weeks to come to a, hopefully consensus or vote on HR. We received some emails from department heads. But otherwise, I did do some research on, I went through the file last week and looked up the current HR consultant, added up the hours, it is equal to, it's a different document, so that I can't say it's all. But this is what they put down on paper. They worked forty-eight point nine hours this fiscal year. So I just did easy math, anybody else can do that too. So you take the twenty-one thousand, six hundred, divide it by the forty-eight point nine hours. They might do other work that is not on paper, I have no idea. But that equals four hundred and forty-one dollars per hour, if you do the math breakdown. My only question, and I could've reached out to Hopkins and the group junior. You know, do we really wanna go into a contract because their billable hour rate is the same as their ten hours per month? Or do we just, if this is the one we go with, do we just have further contracts or RFP? I think it states in there that they will provide ten hours a month at two thousand dollars a month. So that's two hundred bucks an hour, and I think the billable rate was two hundred bucks an hour. Knowing what current consultant only put on paper is only forty.
Fifty-one.
Yeah, I know you're. Hopkins. So I think they had two different proposals, they had the hourly rate of two hundred bucks for shareholder attorneys. Or we could do the twenty-four thousand dollars for a longer contract for up to ten hours of work. To me, I don't know if we could do either the four. But, you know, they do a contract rate and they do an hourly rate, to me, it's the same rate, no matter what.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
You know, it might be cheaper in the end just to do an hourly rate if we don't think we're gonna do more than a hundred and twenty hours a year. But that's a big if, right? We can have records show that the current one only.
Well, if we did only a hundred and twenty hours, it would be.
Additional two hundred.
It would be the hourly rate anyway, so.
Correct. So why would we sign the contract if we just do the hourly rate if this is what the support wants to do? So we got that to think about, we got the current one we have with Ailers and Tony at eighteen hundred bucks a month, unlimited hours. And then we have Paul Ruth with unlimited hours at fifteen hundred dollars. Any other information that you guys needed or?
I guess my thinking is Mike calls the, is that just a one here?
It's pretty much monthly. But I, I don't think there was, is there a verage from Mike or Ann in this proposal that stated?
I guess words, he said that we probably should've went up, but.
And you can look at those claims board numbers, I don't think they're open to the public, they're confidential records. To show who they actually talk to within the county for those hours that I explained. There has been a lot of HR issues and I should've done a comparison to two years ago and see if it was less hours. But I only did last, sorry, the current here.
That was two years ago, we got union contracts, a little bit more for that.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, 'cause this current year, we did not have union contracts, negotiations. Um, yeah, we can either do an hourly, hourly rate at the three fifty for Mike, three fifteen for Ann, two seventy-five for Jeffrey. Or we can do the alternate flat rate of eighteen hundred dollars per month. But we have that thirty-day out, so. You did get emails from Brian and Paul that they also match the thirty-day out. So both, all three, I guess I can state, all three will do a thirty-day notice and they will stop service.
Well, I'm not, I was thinking about this last week here. We got two, two attorneys, the one is just in HR, director. Talked a lot, seen a lot of emails. But then it was stated in here how employees don't feel like they can go to the HR with anything. And we had an attorney, Paul, been here before. My personal opinion is I think we need to get Paul charged. He's the cheapest. If we do end up in a lawsuit, we already, we will have a insurance attorney. I might even want to do decide to meet our contractor, PJ Ruth. So we'll get to her, nothing, nothing else.
Is there a second? Is there a second? For Travis's motion to enter into it? Is that a contract per month per year? Tried?
Yeah, basically, I mean, it was a year, wasn't it?
In his proposal, it said shall complete these services at a cost of fifteen hundred dollars per month, and shall reimburse any mileage. This same rate should be considered for a two-year contract. So do you wanna do a one-year or two-year?
Twenty-three, yeah, we, we gotta weigh out. We love a lot of two-years on the table.
That's your motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second? I will second that motion. Any more discussion? If not, we'll call both Travis.
Hi.
Steve.
Nah.
Scott.
Yeah.
J I, motion died two to zero, sorry, two-two. Any other motion?
I made a motion to hire Hopkins and Reddinger. And just go with the hourly rate.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second. Motion by Scott, second by Steve to go offer an hourly rate with Hopkins and Hainer PDC of Des Moines. Any more discussion? That's an hourly rate.
We, we did one year, you know, what we've done years prior for billing.
I never did that research.
I only kind of, yes, the attorney of the room, that billing is more of an art of science. I'm not sure what they build. You know, to me personally, we had some that were on kind of, when I was in private practice, I don't feel like I build every time they called or emailed for something quick. Because that mean we have a contract and they're getting paid regardless. I only had to build for more in-depth projects or responses. But certainly, if I was not on a contract and I was being billed hourly, I probably wouldn't have built for every single call, every single email. Even if only took me two minutes to respond to them. So, I'm not a thousand percent sure how it's gonna work, we haven't had it obviously. Who knows what numbers truly will be here or. Just move your thought, but my thoughts will stay either way, I'm just making a comment.
It'll be hard to budget forward for it.
But actually, we got thirty days out, so are we gonna be dealt on? Cause this will start July first, are we gonna start August first?
Yeah.
We got thirty days.
Yep. I haven't heard that motion yet, but that wasn't part of my discussion here, it is.
But I think that part of the motion, or you want a second update? August first. Or I don't know, maybe you won't, maybe like August fifth or something, but I'm gonna let her draft it, you know?
I still don't want to do the first of month, I'm sure. So I doubt they're gonna wanna pick it up in the middle of the month, I think just be my, probably easier for the order too. If everyone's just building monthly as opposed to building in the middle of the month or the fifth of the month. But I would say, if you're, that's the question, you're gonna be either August one, get the letter out right away, email today, or September one. So you're, if you're on a monthly billing cycle, that's what I can do. I would presume, unless they're gonna build something later.
All I can say is there's a claim behind us that hasn't been approved yet. This was not part of my calculation, but. So do a claim here for today. And this is what we currently bill us. Date of June twenty-sixth, this is services rendered through June fifteenth.
And they do have that since the time of, yeah.
And the date on the description of services rendered was from May sixteen through June twelve. And that's a current bill. So, does that change anything?
Was that project though?
Project of the, the HR services, and there's like fifteen entries of attorney's abbreviation and hours of consultation.
This is from Hopkins and Hainer?
No, Ailers.
Oh, alright, okay.
I just, tomorrow's the first, I mean, are we gonna have a letter, are they gonna have a letter in their hand tomorrow? Knowing that they're gonna, first of August, or maybe fifth of August or something.
I would say if you're gonna start new, remember you start with the industry first, but that's, that's my guess.
Could it be like September first?
Yeah, I would just say, I think it's cleaner, if you're gonna start something, something new, you start with them on the first of, that makes the most sense to me logically.
I guess we did September first, if that works, maybe right up to your number.
September first.
I think September is hourly.
That's what the motion was, yeah. Any more discussion? So I have a motion by Scott, second by Steve to go alter, interconnect with Hopkins and.
Evener, evener, whatever.
Yep, Scott, perfect. For a rate of two hundred dollars or hourly rate, I can't even say two hundred, cause there's other partnerships in that.
I don't get what you're saying, but I think the hourly rate is, I mean. I could be wrong, but most attorneys don't bill an hour for a two-minute conversation.
I'll defer on that.
But Hopkins said that they would be keeping track of how many hours.
That's a day on a contract.
All ten papers will be in increments of one tenth hours.
Yeah. And date is September first start. Roll call Scott.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Travis.
No.
Jake, no. Dave wants to stay alone, RFPs, is this a county, you have to take the lowest proposed RFP?
I don't think so, no, it's individualized service, so it's, you're not, they're apples to apples. And you, you're two-two, so I think it's up to you, up to the board, if they wanna continue to shoot over and talk with the folks or or take a fifth member, see if you can break a tie or if it's a different direction, you wanna get, have the feedback from the folks. I want to add a motion that's titled, please.
Is there another motion or a different opinion suggestion?
Make a motion to continue our agreement with, if yours is okay. One more year.
Motion by Steve to continue with, give us a preneed law PC to continue as is for one year. Start here. Start here. Motion by Steve, second by Scott. To use Hugner and Cooney for county HR services for one year at the current rate of eighteen hundred bucks per month. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call Steve.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Travis?
No.
Jake, no. Motion died two-two. Alright, moving on, I think, unless you guys have a different motion. Anything else on that line item? Alright, moving on. Discuss twenty-eighty agreement with County Social Services. We'll piggyback this off with the meeting that we had on Wednesday as a committee assignment. Only six members, voting members were present, very short meeting. Part of the meeting, though, talked about this twenty-eighty agreement. Um, it was table until we use either HR attorney to draft a twenty-eighty, but it came to a consensus that we shall, should, should stay together as a team until December thirty-first. Uh, because, you know, there's still things that need to be done. Um, so things that need to be done yet, for example, like pay bills the next couple of months. Um, as of today, at ten o'clock here, just trying to find up the document here. No, I can recap if I can remember anything. Um, so today at ten o'clock, there's a picnic over at Lions Park in Shell City for the nineteen staff members to wipe clean their computers and to have a picnic for their last day of employment as CSS employees. Um, long story short, three staff members will be on as an hourly contractor to finish off the claims that happened from this date forward. Um, they are the business manager, Chris, the HR individual, Megan, and Mary will stay on as a CEO. I'm doing duties for claims, um, cleaning up the books. And then they're open to be done by August, but that's not a guarantee. Uh, these three individuals will need some kind of guidance from the twenty-eighty board yet. Two closeout activities ending today, so. Long story short, our meetings will all be virtual only going forward. Um, I will host them here at this boardroom, if it's available on Wednesdays, um, every month. Um, I don't ask any of the board members or CSS to attend, only through a go-to meetings app. Just so we don't break any twenty-eightys slash open records, open meeting laws. Uh, we still have to host a meeting, so. Any questions on current agenda item? But I feel as a CSS representative and chair of that board, uh, we stay together until December thirty-first. The full cash in that account was very healthy. As of claims being paid, they still have over three million dollars to pay claims. All the transitional pay was paid to the nineteen individuals. Some good news, five of the nineteen did get jobs with the Iowa Care Association. Uh, so five current as of four o'clock today will get jobs tomorrow with, um, Iowa Care Association on Des Moines. Um, so they are bringing some knowledge from the region to the district. Hopefully they continue on what they provide to the people of our district, so.
You speak that taking that money?
Once, yeah, so once all the bills are paid, um, and we close out, hopefully by August, um, the state will take all that money. I did ask the question of the trust fund, because we talked about the trust fund having like two hundred eighty thousand in it. Nobody knew in the room what they're going to do, but the state will have to try to get that from the health insurance trust fund. Um, because the business is no longer in business as of midnight tonight.
So you anticipate terminating the twenty-eighty as soon as the last bill's paid or do you want to keep up until December?
So in a mock twenty-eighty that I saw from, uh, ISAC, they put the date in there, December thirty-first. Um, I, I think let's get through one more month and then see how the twelve county supervisor boards. The issue is happening, and we're seeing the issue that nobody wants to attend anymore. So if we don't have a board, be six members or more, to attend these July, August, September meetings, can the twenty-eighty stay and has no action taken, right? I, I guess what you're feeling as representing me.
Yeah, sorry, my, my feeling is we should terminate as soon as possible. Um, you know, once the bills are paid. I think the termination says, um, once the code sectors have the change, the statute requirements have the change which we have effective twelve oh one AM tonight.
Correct.
Um, I think the majority of the members terminated the agreement, it's just the natural ending. It should happen sooner rather than later.
Correct.
And I understand the concern with making sure all the bills are paid. You don't want to leave it hanging out there if no authority. But I think as soon as that last bunch of bills are paid, it should be closed as soon as possible.
So I have a mock up one from ISAC, it's from that, their general counsel. And it says in there, region governing body to withdraw blank, from the CSS region. Uh, this one says ICTS twenty-eighty agreement effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. So, um, I can give you a copy of this, Dave. I don't know if we want to work on it, or I have Ann from Hugner Cooney work on it. To me, it should be following our twenty-eighty slash just, nobody knows on that date is the date to pay the last bill. That's the problem. So I can visit with you more about it, if that's okay here.
Yeah, the fashion, the twenty-eighty said it stays open for a year. I don't know how that's possible.
Yeah, what's the purpose of the board meeting? Have to last bill to pay this. I know other counties, um, want out as soon as possible, just as those strings attached to the state, um, financial or liability.
Yeah.
You know, so I know other counties will want out as soon as possible.
Yeah, I just, I, if we're not part of the service, we don't have employees. To me, it's such an advanced situation with the state, I don't know what they're going to do.
Fair enough, and I think that's a concern for some counties.
I would try to answer.
Alright, any questions on that agenda item? I'll bring it back as soon as we have some document to sign off on. We got a minute, but. What do you guys feel about just shutting down the YouTube for the last two agenda items? Do you want me to set it back up again after we get out of this closed? You haven't just covered it up, muted, or what's your consensus?
Yeah, I think people might want to hear about the permanent plan and not, so the farms.
So what we do then is just mute it and make sure it's muted and cover the glass, so. So at ten o'clock, a possible closed session under Iowa Code twenty-one point five K, reference Iowa Code twenty-two point seven fifty, to discuss updated security procedures at county-owned properties. I think we need to go into closed session for our policy. And, um, we did have a meeting last, two weeks ago on some security concerns slash meeting, so. Give you guys an update and, uh, maybe move forward with some stuff. Is there a motion to enter into closed session under Iowa Code twenty-one point five K? So. Sorry. Motion by Steve, second by Travis, to enter closed session under Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five K. At ten o'clock here, so we'll call Steve.
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Jake, I, motion is carried four to zero with the absence of Isaac.
10:43 we are back into session here. No action out of the closed session that we just had. All right, moving on down the list then. Appoint a rural board member to the Uppam Memorial Library Board to fill vacancy ending December 31st of 26. She did reach out to the librarian Jackie. She did send candidates, first choice, second choice. Looks like the member Dr. Joe Prard is stepping down today. And that term of his does end the 2nd/31st of 26. So Travis, this is your area. Did you do any research?
Yeah, basically I'm gonna make more people go on. Their first choice.
The first choice?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Sorry. Motion by Travis and by Steve to appoint a rural board member to the Uppam Memorial Library Board. That's in Freigsburg to fill a vacancy ending December 1st of 2026. So she will start today and the person is Lacy Kelly. That'll start July 1st of 25. Any discussion? If not, we'll call Travis.
All right.
Steve?
Hi.
Scott?
All right.
Jake, motion's carried for zero with the absence of I think. Steve, would you see if Ray's available for the solar, commercial solar farms? He did have a conference call tonight, but it should be done by the end of this week. Land use administrator Ray Armel. Good morning, Ray. More discuss commercial solar farms. So Ray has been on this for a couple of weeks, months. He gave us a draft potential ordinance that was emailed to you guys last week. We did bring this question up to the six county meeting and happened to be a Fayette County supervisor across from me and he gave me a copy of Fayette County's ordinance. I don't know if you've seen that. But yeah, what do you got for us and why should we consider this ordinance?
I looked at Ray's ordinances, I looked at a sample ordinance that provided by the industry. And developed.
So I think supervisors, and all of us, I would say, I guess, they're common.
Oh, yeah.
I think we need something in place if we want to protect property rights if we can before somebody sticks a photovoltaic in somebody's yard or property. These are only commercial grade. These are not the residential ones that you see around today.
That's right.
These are not the ones that you see on people's roofs, on people's sheds, or for themselves. These are for commercial use.
These are for those facilities where the power is sold back, completely sold back to the
Utility.
Utility companies.
In the industry, just because I do have an electrical license, these are more the solar farms, they call them. More acres. Some are anywhere from 200 acres up to 5,000 acres under their license or development.
What inquiries I've had, they're talking 10 to 30 acres per site. So inquiries I've had.
Any board member has any, you did have a checklist of?
Yeah, just some talking points, points of interest that I had. You know, if you wanted any more further clarification month from month is in the suggested or what I put together. Like ground cover, you know, any comments in there or further comments regarding maintenance, the type of foliage, you know, and you know, make sure that there's no noxious weeds, notation.
Just comparing Fayette to tell when I had a chance to look at and the one that you prepared. Do we have anything to do with noise? Because there is some noise generated with these. If they're movable, sometimes they check with the rate of sun.
Right.
Blackout county, they actually move from east to west.
They will rotate. Yeah, they are potentially.
Are we concerned with noise? Talking to Scott a little bit about?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm annoyed. I mean, I guess one thing I'm more concerned with was the glare on the road. Or I know there's some proposals.
And we have a comment in here on glare. Exit glare, section 4E.
And I think that adjacent roadways would cover that if a traveler is coming and the sun's in the right. It could be very dangerous looking into that panel.
That's why I started going with these. What they propose is in the winter time, it's all the ground and those things and that roadway, it would be.
I think that E does cover that, but the developer and the land use administrator make sure, I hope, that they're movable. They're gonna rotate with that sun and make sure it doesn't blind the oncoming traffic. Section 8, I do like Fayette counties, they are charging $1,000 for application. I don't know what the going rate is. It just seems like this is their specialty and why not? You want the developer to pay a little bit more.
Well, I did 500 because that's what we charged. The wind energy per site equals $500 fee.
Insulation's eating the saliva.
Yeah, and we are talking larger acres per site on this versus on wind energy, we're talking.
And in Fayette.
One per site.
It was up to within.
Yeah, their verbiage is. Yeah, their verbiage is. Fees for utilities scale solars are $1,000 for projects less than 200 acres and $100 for every 100 acres over the 200 acres. So they have a moving adjustment.
Over 200 acres?
If it's over 200 acres, then it's $100 more for any additional 100 acres.
So a thousand for the first 100 acres?
The thousand for the first 200. And then anything over the additional 100 acres is an additional 100 bucks. I can let you see this too. $100 per 100 acres. So I don't know if you want 500 bucks yet, guys, in the draft, on the new future?
Oh, maybe.
I think those.
Are they talking maybe acres or?
We're talking basically what I have been receiving is in basically 10 to 30 acres.
And what I've typed, what I've heard is 30 to 50.
Yeah.
And probably in the 30 range initially.
Mitchell County Supervisor at the CSS, I mean, they talked about the big 500 to 2,000 acres. Going Mitchell and Howard, but in the works, in the works.
Yeah, you get $500 for one project and this one project is $500 per.
Sixty-six.
Yeah.
You get $33,000 for that project, so it's 500 times as much.
Yeah. No, that can easily change that $3,000. I have no problem with that.
What about fencing? Anywhere from six foot, but no more than eight foot, you don't want them too tall.
Well, yeah.
I don't know.
I, I guess I wanted to make sure that, you know, we talked about it, that I got, I believe I have six foot in there.
Yeah.
And. I think it's a matter of, one, there's just fencing there. Best, you know, game, I think we need to make sure accessibility just for emergency purposes. You know, somebody is hurt and then combines on that, it's fenced in, it can be opened for emergency purposes.
I'm just gonna compare Fayette County's getting right. They have a whole section on emergency. They use, you gotta have an I-1 address, you have to.
Yeah, that's.
The plan has to have. The owner should submit a site plan, an emergency plan to a local fire protection districts whose jurisdiction is included in the whole or in part with that project.
Similar to what we did with so many energy.
The emergency plan will be included with any application required approval from the local fire protection jurisdiction. Can't have any necessary training if at owner's expense. Anything else on the points of interest? Grant, like Ray said, you guys want foliage underneath these?
You wanted to find foliage or you wanted to say the foliage shall not include noxious weeds and foliage shall be maintained at, on a regular basis so as not to cause a.
Side issue or?
Yeah, side issue or anything.
Or the seeds go home to my neighbor's field and that's.
Yeah.
It's gonna cost a lot of weed pressure, but. Do you have any thoughts on that? Or what Ray said, pretty much?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, obviously you shouldn't have noxious weeds in there.
Correct.
At the same time, when you say that, it'd be, you can say that before.
Oh, yeah. Climate materials, this is the county proposals. Must not have been treated with synthetic insecticides.
You know, I don't know, to what extent you really wanna go. I just, I just, I think you can go a little overboard with some of this. My, my opinion, I think you can get. Yeah, I mean, the solar farms. Let's face it, they're not gonna have any foliage, it's gonna grow to any large extent, they're gonna maintain it and operate it the way it should be.
Yeah.
You know, so I think by simply stating, you know, no noxious weeds can be allowed to be a part of the foliage. Or something to that effect, you know, something.
Anything else on soil, I mean, what was your point about soil removal?
Well, there is, in some of them, you know, there's always talk out there, but on some extreme ordinances, they'll say no solar farms or utility grade solar farms will be, shall take the high grade soils out of production.
Which you had to.
And then they would stipulate in there the soil rating.
The corn circle rating?
Yeah.
I don't know. Anybody else? How much control do we want over that owner that owns that grounds?
Yes.
And he's getting x amount for a rental agreement? To me, I don't know if I like that in there.
Yeah, that's why, you know, I'm just.
No, I know you are.
It's out there, it's been part of discussions, you know, throughout the state.
And I think we all should be good stewards of the personal property to any county right of way. Does anybody put a land, you wanna put a corn circle rating on there?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Got it?
No.
Scott?
No.
What about locations of dwellings, personal houses, their neighbors?
Right now, it's in there, it's 50 foot setback, adjacent dwellings.
That's comment, you think?
That's, that's.
Standard.
That's standard. No, you're not talking about something that is in extreme heights that caused a concern if it was to fail and fall. So we don't have that concern.
One more trying to.
No. And if not, I mean, you could incorporate within the setback. The planting's a. But then you can't do that because you're, you know, there are not a lot of plantings that are gonna grow so high and they'll sort of disrupt, you know, those few rows of pans. So maybe a further setback. A greater setback from 50 foot, by what consider.
I think you might want one more than 50 foot. Commercial.
Talking about the county or the state right of way, Fayette County has 60 foot from the right of way and 80 foot from the state right of way. Fayette County also states panels shall be at least 300 feet from a residential that is not part of the project area.
I would like that a lot better than. Good choice, pretty close.
Yeah. We talked about Blair survey. This would be like if they do a parcel plot. You're wondering if we should survey.
My, my opinion is if the parcel itself has not been surveyed, it should be surveyed. It's for protection of not just them, but also adjacent landlords. And that is if they're using the entire parcel. If they're not using the entire landlord parcel, let's say they're using 10 acres of 40 acres. I would want that 10 acres, I'm asking, if we put them there, those 10 acres then be parceled off, surveyed off and identified as a separate parcel. Because then the remaining 30 acres, we could locally assess. Because I'm sure the remaining 30 acres, they'll be red for farm ground or what have.
It'd be a lot easier for the assessor to assess.
Yeah, because, because see, unlike wind energy, these parcels, these solar wind farms, these solar farms are centrally assessed by the state of Iowa. Okay? They're not locally assessed. And with that said, with it all being on one parcel, I cannot just pull these parcels out and create my own new descriptions. This requires that to be done, allows us then to assess then the adjacent land or the remaining land.
No, I think that's. Needs to be done.
Yeah, I mean, I could just, for cash law handle, because.
Decommission. You have that on D, last page, no, second to last page, section 5D. Pretty much puts it back where you found them. Take out the roads, take out the access roads, the surface grid back to solar profile. Do we ever put a time limit? Like if one went shut down or decommissioned, do we have a set time we want that to be?
No, we're not. And if you'd like one in there.
I think so. Otherwise, they might.
One year.
I think within a year. Anything else?
If you do think it's on, like, you know, and try and incorporate this discussion in with the buildings all the way to the end. And you can correct all my grammar and. And.
We need, I already answered questions.
I'm sure, yeah. You need to find what utilities tell to begin with, structures, because that's the thread right now, applies everywhere.
That's what I was just gonna say too. So Fayette County ordinance says regarding solar energy systems on property located in unincorporated areas of Fayette County. So to me, that title has to be changed a little bit. Because we are not in the cities. Right, right?
What's that?
This ordinance is not, it's a county ordinance. Do we have to put in unincorporated areas?
Probably could, that'd be a self clarification.
Correct. And then they, you said you had a couple things.
Yeah.
Because I have any concerns, but right now before, we can always see another draft.
Yep.
But you, as of right now today, you have not heard of anybody starting breaking ground on any of these yet.
Not breaking ground, no.
How soon do you want this in place?
Quite soon, the better. Tomorrow?
Last week. Sooner than that. I know they're out there, I know they're waiting on the federal government to see if there's any credits, but I think they are coming sooner than we can potentially get this passed. This is my personal opinion, that's right up in here. And they're waiting on, if they get those credits and utility companies need to meet their green energy.
And the other thing that's coming also is battery banks.
Facilities, storage facilities.
Yeah.
That's not a real answer, it might need in the near future. They follow wind, solar, and battery storage facilities. Anything on this agenda for Ray Armel, land use administrator, commercial solar farm? Farms with an S. All right, thanks, Ray.
Yep.
Discuss urban renewal plan, potential projects. I left this on here not knowing if we had anything else new or we wanted to do another project potential down the road. We all know, I read the email last week, December 1st, don't have to do it. Do not have to capture the 360-ish. And I think we should, this is my personal opinion, you guys know where I stand on that. But we need to have these bonds set or sold to check that box or have a potential project going by December 1st. Otherwise, we're at about $30,000 right now, with ongoing expenditures. So I guess what's the next step? Do you guys want Travis up here sometime in July or August to see where we're at for a potential public hearing slash sell-in of a bond?
I guess it would. Be nice after we get the architect hired, if we just had at least an idea of what kind of expenses we're looking at. So let me get Travis up here and discuss. I think, I mean, I don't see Travis up here right now, we don't have a.
We don't have an estimate, but hopefully we get the architect hired by July 31st or August 1st. They can go through a plan and a rough estimate and then get Travis up soon after.
I think we need to look at some of these infrastructure projects that moments like that may be, maybe deciding something's gonna happen two or three years down the road, which is a little harder to do, but that's what we have to do.
Yeah.
But I think that, those projects need to be part of this. I agree.
Anything else? I mean, we'll keep it off for a little bit until we get back from the architect, go hopefully awarding an RFP to them. Otherwise, we still got a month, I would say a month, month and a half, before we have to get Travis back up to talk members. And to set other projects forward to. I've not heard anything with the Homeland Energy Solutions Urban Renewal Business Plan. So wait for that, I guess if that comes, we'll put on the agenda. Otherwise, ball, air court. It is.
Yeah.
Last email was soon, two thirds from a week ago, I think it was. Any day, I would expect an email to be sent out to all five of us. All right, moving on to claims. We got payroll dated June 27th. Motion by Travis, is there a second? Second by Scott to approve the payroll claims of June 27th. Any discussion? If not, we'll call Travis. Scott? Steve?
Hi.
Jake, I, motion carried 4-0 with the absence of Isaac. Prior bill claims, I had one question, Sheila and I, it doesn't really bother me, but it does to a point. One of the prior bills that was entered was EMA only. In the past, we've never seen.
Oh, yeah.
But we have, if you wanna put them together.
Hannah, I was wondering how you get this thirty?
It doesn't matter, like I said, it's $44.96 for a credit card, oh, sorry, AT&amp;T Mobile. That is strictly EMA, we, in the past, have approved EMA only bills.
I was just gonna ask those.
Okay. I know we see joint bills, like internet and cable or whatever at the law office, but that's because it's a joint bill. But this one was strictly separated. And then the other prior bill is $108.23 and that was for credit cards of QuickTrip Inc.
It's EMS.
What's EMS? It's coded up, it's EMA.
Yeah. Just that description.
Okay, so we are gonna approve it because it is EMS. So combination. So combination total will be then, one fifty-three nineteen cents. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Steve, second by Travis to approve a prior bill claims. In the amount of one hundred and fifty-three dollars and nineteen cents, any discussion? If not, Steve?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Jake, I, motion carried four zero with Isaac's consent. And then the bill claims in the amount of three hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-one cents. You guys saw those, just gonna make note, and I know we cannot deny it, um, the TASER bill is in the sheriff's department as requested. Before the meeting, we had myself had a little discussion with the auditor, there was a claim also, I'm not picking on these departments, please, I look at claims, I do my job, I feel. There was one claim, that was for the sheriff's department. It was dated of, I think it was, uh, May twentieth, sorry, June twentieth that came in. The date of the invoice is for July first, paid within that, the net thirty days, so July thirtieth. And we are seeing that today on June thirtieth, when the claim is actually dated for tomorrow. Two hundred and, two hundred and extra dollars, again, should we put an A on this or not, or reverse strategy of trying to get a bill in before the fiscal year? Uh, you guys can look at the bill if you want, I'm not wanting to use, Scott saw it. The bill is actually dated for tomorrow, not even today or prior to today. It's in there, just to bring to your attention again, it's gonna be paid no matter what, um, but it could have waited a week and a half. Right? Anyway, I shared with you my concerns, that's what I knew, but here's the amount, three forty-two, six fifty-three, twenty-one, last fiscal year claim to be approved. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Motion by Steve, second by Scott to approve the claims, three hundred and forty-two thousand, six fifty-three, and twenty-one cents. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call Steve?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Travis?
Uh.
Jake, I, motion carries four zero with the absence of Isaac. Committee assignment, I do.
Back to that, sorry.
Yes.
And the claims, um, I think you're all right with this probably, but now that claims are all finalized and done, and we're gonna know at some point in the next forty-eight hours what money is coming back, the general news. I think, you know, just from a PR standpoint, I think it'd be beneficial to the public that at some point in the next couple of weeks, someone makes some sort of presentation or has some sort of numbers put together, has to be almost given back. Both from GB and GS, and then what the plan is for that money, if it's used to help the end fund balance, and what the end fund balance is, I just think the public. Clearly followed your discussions with the budget process very closely, given what happened to some of the departments and some of the personnel in those departments. And I think the public probably deserves, in my opinion, some sort of explanation as to where we ended the year, um, fiscally. And what the plan is going forward with the money that came back and what kind of fiscal situation the county's in once the fiscal year closes.
And it's already been more than, just like as you were talking.
And I, I think it probably should be in a format that's presentable, I guess with a word I would use and, and digestible by the public. As opposed to, hey, here's the numbers, you know, I see that from sitting here, Bob travels as fast as he can, um, and picks pieces, but, you know, some sort of presentation as to where we're at and what, what was brought back.
No, I think, yeah, I can put my two cents in, cause I've been watching this very closely. Actually, I asked for a pool cash report this morning, and I know where the claims were with pending approval today. Or right now, I can very say we are in better shape than we were presented from the department head team. Of, of a little bit more than we thought was gonna come back, uh. I'm not gonna share those numbers, I don't wanna get finalized to the title software, um, but I have my rough notes where we're at.
Yeah, I think we just made that, so that's good news.
We are in very good shape financially. And I guess this board will have to see if there's excess money in there of the twenty-five percent where we were targeting. And I can share that there is, I'm not gonna share those percentages, but I can share them one-on-one if somebody wants to see them, but probably we will address them this week. Go to Sheila's office, close out the checks, and see what July first shows.
And I don't have my ears, ears closer to the ground than you guys do, but even my ears hear comments that the county's going broke, and the county has more money, and the county's gonna be bankrupt, and these are the things. So I think anything we can do to dispel that, um, now that the fiscal year's wrapped up, it's a natural time to give enough data as to what the fiscal situation is for the county. So that we can dispel some of those very, that's just my suggestion.
And those are all rumors, cause come ask me, I sell those more.
And I'm trying to squash them as well, but I'm just telling you, I hear things.
We are not there, and, and even if everybody spends all their money next year, uh, we are in good financial shape. No.
I just think we need to present that in a way that's presentable and digestible to the public, so they can understand that, that's just, I just wanna be sure I'm.
And remind you, and I'll clean this up, cause I know where we stand, we can only use what the department head team gives us for a reestimation. Um, some of that stuff that happened in March and April or before was them maybe not knowing where those expenditures are. No budget, my numbers went negative, uh, we can't. So everybody gave something back, every department gave something back, some gave a lot back. We can always do better for next year.
Going back to saying we need twenty-five percent on balance, for example, as in earlier, um, part of the agendas, Heartland, this was five hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
At least that's pretty big.
In July, so we need a lot of money currently there.
And if you look at that, uh, fine, right now for the cash pool, so we still have to take out claims, but they're gonna go on to spot numbers and get everybody confused. But right now, after the claims, you know, there's not, there's been probably only half that amount of money left in there for the bills to get paid right now, right after we pay Heartland.
Correct, out of GS.
Yep.
And we still have three months of payroll, which covers, uh, one, I believe, individual payroll, which is your election deb议, and all the health insurance, so.
Anyway, the presentation you gave to the proper heads, whichever one we had on the screen where Bob was there, to notes and report, and I think it's very, uh, helpful.
Correct.
To people in the general public, and I think something like that, again, now the fiscal year is close, would be helpful to the general public, can, it's, I just, I wanna make sure that we're squashing some of the things that I'm hearing that. About the fiscal management and the fiscal position, whatever.
Correct.
Yep.
I, you, you'd be there, no?
I agree, I agree, that's just my request.
Thank you, uh, committee assignments, so we did my CSS, uh, just go back to the sixth county, that was in Fredericksburg, adheres to you on Thursday, all four of us were actually there, so. I don't know if you guys wanna share anything, but it was just a very sidewalks and the right of way, you know, we're seeing a lot more of these, uh, smaller, uh, towns, cities, uh, unincorporating, so, you know. What happens then to their streets and right of ways? Is it getting followed in, are the counties taking over the potential snow removal from the sidewalks? And, or other things that wasn't a city, uh, ran by the governing body, is what's gonna be turned over to the county now responsible, responsibilities. For county to take it over then, if they do indeed unincorporate. Uh, legislature update, House five seven eighteen, um, really not, any update, cause nothing changed this year. Um, talked about the all systems permit for the road system. Supervisor broke off, and we did talk about full-time IT, pretty much all over the board, if they have people in-house or contracted. Mental health advocate, um, you guys all right, a lot of unknowns yet, to see how the county's gonna pay for it and ask for reimbursement. You know, they said they will pay up until December first for mental health advocates, we'll see if the state actually moves forward with continuing to pay for mental health advocates. Uh, human resource, a lot of people use, two counties I think use Anderson Law Firm for HR, um. We use, you know, A Little Career right now. Budget staffing, et cetera, I did take this point, you guys have, uh, add one too. In Winnebago County, uh, for example, they, when they do budgets, um, they actually see what every individual's get, I'm talking benefit package to VICA, to health insurance. So the board and the department team knows exactly how much that person is receiving from the county for that specific job or jobs. I think that's a very good budget tool to see the breakdown of all county, even us, even us, right? Um, that was about it, anything else, Six County?
Did you, what date did you have the CSS?
CSS was Wednesday of the twenty-fifth, Six County was the twenty-sixth. Travis, have anything?
Yeah, uh, after the Six County meeting I attended, I jumped on, I didn't call for the Turbine Water shed at one o'clock. Didn't, had much, they, uh, had a presentation on waterfall in the Turbine. Then a bunch of grant updates, about all was there. And then at two o'clock, there was an emergency, one of these guy, work force development board meeting.
And at Six County, no supervisor knew what that meeting was about.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna tell you. So, basically what's going on is the, there's one, two, three, four, five, there's six districts in State Island. One covers basically the west half of State Island, which is run, run by the state. There's one, there's a district right around Des Moines, and then there's four that's on the east half. Uh, looking forward to budget cuts from federal and state government. The south, south central region is looking to merge with. They're trying to get all four of us to merge together.
So just three left?
So there would be three in the whole state. We wanna leave the one around Des Moines and the one on the west half, one on the east half, they want to basically. Try to merge, get everybody to merge, so that they're still local control. Not gonna be run by the state.
That was poor.
I don't, I don't know what everybody's feelings are, but I, I don't know if we need to put this on the agenda.
We are in the twenty D agreement with them.
Yep, so.
With our county neighbors.
Yep. Uh, as far as.
Is there a, yeah, they're voting?
There's gonna be a vote, like, well, there's a meeting July tenth. So if you wanna put that on the agenda, I'll forward this email to everybody.
And what date were you there?
Uh, that was Thursday after the Six County, or after the Turbine.
Okay.
It's, I have to read back in twenty D. Who owns the, our district now, the twenty D body, right? It's not run by the state.
No, it's not run by the state. Next, what, way it's explained to us is if we merge, it will not be run by the state. But if we do this, there's a possibility, because it's gotta go to the state to get approved, the state could just say, well, we'll just move. And like they did on the west, west half of the state.
Who funds it now?
Well, it's federal state government.
Oh, I see, so, okay, I get it, so if they cut the funding.
They're talking like twenty-five percent less between the two. What they're, basically what they're trying to look at is if we merge, we can still keep control.
I see, I get it.
Unless the state says no.
Well, yeah. Cause they're fun, yeah, they're funding it to a point. Oh, that is bad news. Anything else?
No.
Yeah, we'll put it on. Scott, you got it?
Yeah, committee assignment, but I do have a work comment and private question for Dave. Um, I know you, I talked to Jake about this, but the House plot seven oh six was passed. Probably all elected and appointed officials within ninety days to have no more than an hour class on chapter twenty-one and twenty-two. And I guess my question on that would be, it says newly elected or newly appointed, but what about all the people that are currently sitting on all the commissions and boards? That have never had any of that, because the fines of, find incredible.
I haven't looked at it, but the email last that we got, men is pretty, it sounded like it was just newly appointed for new people. And that Public Information Board was to create this one-hour class and make it available online.
And then the governing body has to hold certificate of that training, but who provides that training, like to our VA commissioners?
I think the Public Information Board is gonna put out a, that's the way I understood it, is gonna put out a training vehicle of some sort, uh, uh, webinar that you can go on and watch. That is a minimum of hour length to talk about open sessions, closed sessions, rules governing those types of issues.
And then do we take the auditor system of them completing that? Or?
Well, I think it probably come to the auditor's office for, uh, a checklist of all the public bodies that we have now. Uh, or someone to create that list and then make sure that as new persons come on, even those positions, they do comply and provide proof of completing the project, that's what I was suggesting.
So I know we can't change law, and we can debate this later too, but we just put on two people for the VA commission, they follow the new law, right, that affects tomorrow.
You haven't said that before.
Yes, they're newly appointed.
Okay.
Uh, which way I understand it?
I think the point is that eventually it'll cycle through and every single person will have had this training, yep, that's the, that's the term.
We've heard this before with these volunteer boards, why would somebody sit in an hour training when they don't get paid? You're gonna see a lot less boards, members dying for these, uh, commissions and boards, in my opinion.
I don't know, I look at it the opposite direction, I look at it as maybe it's an educational opportunity for people on the boards to, to be better at, as a board member, uh, you know, to frame it that, to frame it that way. But I think someone, um, I don't know who this falls upon, I suppose the auditor, cause they're the keeper of the records for all these boards, someone needs to create a, a list of some sort. What you sort of asked for, but create a little list, uh, that, that designates all these boards and commissions that you appoint people to in that run for these positions or elected. And then somehow have some sort of marketing system to say each year that they've completed their training as they roll off or continue to roll forward.
So we already have directory.
Yep.
To watch out for when their, um, their offices come out.
Or then you expand that somehow and make a, a Excel spreadsheet of some sort for each fiscal year or calendar year, how we wanna do it. That says that they have completed their, their training as required by law.
And most likely, I second to care about is that the new elected officer training in January.
Supervisors would be interested in, at least, or the opportunity every year. But, you know, fourteen years on city council, we never, never had nothing on twenty-two.
No one, no one has.
County trustees, I'm sure, never.
And no one has, and that's what they're trying to get away from us, to try and, I think, be proactive in preventing problems. And say, hey, if we train at least one of these members in the next year, eventually all of them have this training, it won't happen as the open means complaints or violations stick wide. I think that's the intent of law, whether it works or not, I have enough knowledge.
Correct.
I would, I would presume that all of our associated agencies, county association, auditor, treasurer, the like, the official sheriffs, when they do the signatures, they're gonna have that hour put in, just like I have hour of ethics and. Health and wellness built into my requirements, my specific position now. Maybe you guys have that built into the license and your training as well.
Yep.
That's all I hear.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's something we need to start, we need to figure out a way to track it and, and a good way to track it.
And some of the things we're gonna hear too, if they don't have a county email, county address, how are they gonna go on for that hour, and who's gonna verify that they actually took it or get to get to? Are we gonna have to be the keeper of hosting something, or are they just gonna online and do it? Right, we don't know that yet.
Well, in, in theory, we could offer it here in a board rumor, a conference one somewhere, at someone's office, and say, we're gonna play the video from noon to one on, you know, four times a year. Well, in, in theory, we could offer it here in the board room or in conference room somewhere, at someone's office, and say, we're gonna play the video in front of noon to one on, you know, four times a year of the, the first, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, I mean. Who better than to come and attend, get come and attending, get their hour done.
Gotcha.
You know, we could offer that to the county conservation boards, to the trustees, trustees, whoever, and say, hey, we'll do it four times a year this next, this next fiscal year, starting in September, do one in the fall, and do one in the field in November, and do one, you know, maybe February or March. Um, do that conference under the community services building and invite everyone to come and get their hour done.
What if we, uh, put it on the board's agenda and they do it in their meeting as part of their agenda, and then they know that their group is done?
Yeah, I think there's lots of, lots of ideas and lots of options, but we're gonna have to, to work to come up with it.
Yeah, and they got ninety days from their start.
And I don't know if they've, they've, the video's out yet, I mean, I don't think they've, I haven't been on the.
It is.
It's a little brother.
Stop, not the.
Once it's available, then you'll be able to start.
Sounds good, anything else to discuss, future agenda items? If not, I got eleven thirty-two, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Correct. Motion by Scott, second by Travis to adjourn on eleven thirty-two. Roll call quick, Scott?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi, Steve?
Hi.
Jake, I, motion carried four zero, absent Isaac.